Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. We're gonna go ahead and bring our meeting to order. And I'd like to ask the roll the call, please.
Lou.
Here.
Bozeman.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Posthaus.
Here.
Park. Reed. Bowden.
Thank you. Can you please all stand for the pledge?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a three-part flag for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll now move into the public participation portion of the meeting. And Dr. Parker will begin with the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody. As always, we're gonna start with our safety minute. And we're having some technical difficulties tonight, so there won't be anything on the screen. But I need to ask if I have any volunteers to call 911, first aid responders, and anyone certified in CPR, please. If you could raise your hand. Thank you very much. Just a reminder, our exits are off to the right and the left, and the AED machine is up in the main hallway to the right. Let's go start with reviewing the data dashboard. And it's located online if we don't get it pulled up here. But our enrollment at the end of April was 4,425 students. And we're gonna continue reviewing our registration information here in the next week or so, and should have an update on where our numbers stand. But I expect them to be very consistent with our projections. We also added some data regarding our recent pilot of the one-to-one technology, which Mrs. Bowman and several of our staff members are here to present on later this evening. And in that packet, you'll notice there's about 87% of our students feel that using the iPad or the Chromebook makes learning more interesting. And 75% of the students feel they learn more with the device in class, and that they feel technology's helping them to express themselves in a creative way. So I know that Heather and her team are gonna discuss some of that data, but I thought those were interesting statistics. So looking forward to learning more about that tonight. Also like to compliment Dunlap High School and Project Purple on their recent assembly with Chris Heron. For anyone who was able to see that, I look forward to that program continuing and growing here in the future. It's very well received by our students. And a special thank you to all of our sponsors and to Mr. Welsh and the high school for that event. So it's outstanding. We're gonna have a few recognitions tonight. We're gonna start with Banner Elementary School. And Mr. Fairchild has a special presentation on a student, which, of course, is the reason we're here.
Good evening. This is, I'd like to introduce you. This is a fifth grader, banner, Mrs. Maggie Smith. Happens to be Amy Smith's daughter as well. And she's done some exciting things, kind of on her own here. I just wanted to describe this. She entered a contest through PBS called "The Healthy Lunchtime Challenge" in the Kid's State Dinner. And what she had to do, she had to submit a recipe that adhered to certain guidelines outlined by the U.S. Department of Education. And she also had to write an essay about this. Well, she created this food. She said she spent a lot of money just experimenting with different types of foods and all different types of ingredients, right? And her recipe is named "The West Wing Chicken with Secret Service Noodles", AKA Panco-crested Chicken with Maryara Sauce and Zucchini Noodles with Spirits. So Maggie's recipe and essay has placed her in the top three in Illinois. If she wins, if she's selected as our state winner, she will be able to be loaned to Washington, D.C. And she'll attend a Kid's State Dinner hosted by Mrs. Obama. And we'll find out sometime in June. So Maggie has brought her recipe to share with you. And I'd like to recognize Maggie for this great accomplishment so far, top three. Do you have any questions for me? I told her you might have questions for her. I'll pass up for us if you'd like to ask questions.
Maggie, how many calories for this dish? Could you go?
Mrs. Obama probably wanna know. Did your family try it out a number of times? Did you practice it?
Yeah. I practiced the recipe every time to get it right. And the third time was just the best for me and my family. And I really enjoyed the chicken especially because I just love how it's processed. And I'm a tenderer.
Okay, very good. Congratulations.
Do you cook a lot?
Yeah, I really like to cook. And at the beginning, I just liked cooking when I was watching the Food Network on TV. I really liked, like, every Friday, I would make a recipe, dessert, and dinner. And I was really enjoying it. And I like to think, as a good child, I would live in the dinner and the school.
We're proud of you, too. Thank you. And next, we have Mr. Chaderton here tonight.
It'll take me just a second to set the stage a little bit, let me say. Okay, so Amy Stefanski is our new district librarian. And one of the things that she did when she first started was start partnering with the Barnes &amp; Noble locally. And then she came across that they had this contest. It was, was it the name of the contest?
It was, like, my favorite teacher contest.
And she promoted it with some of the kids. And what you only got about eight was one of the people that submitted a poem. Correct. So tell us a little bit about why you were inspired to write. We're not going to read the full poem because it's four pages. Just tell the Board of Education what kind of inspires you to write and why this is a joke mine.
Okay, well, so when I first heard about this contest, I thought it was, first of all, interesting that it was about, like, a my-favorite-teacher contest. And I wanted to try it because there was one teacher I knew I had in mind. It was my third grade teacher, Sarah Erving. And it's because she's actually what inspired me to read and write. She was, like, one of my biggest inspirations. I was, like, a kid in elementary school. And since I love writing today, I really wanted to write about her and I really wanted to win this for both of us.
Oh, well, school can see. And so anyway, she's our regional winner for Barnes &amp; Noble. You guys are featured on WME. What was the, what did we show you guys tomorrow? Living Well. And so they got some positive press. And we'll see where it goes from there. But anyway, it truly embodies why we're all here and inspiring kids in Washington to grow and learn. They are so, so all free of you.
I have one final recognition tonight. If you're at the, I think it was the last four we recognized. Amy George and Shawna Segler were going to be our new DEA co-presidents. And so Amy's actually here tonight. I have Shawna. If you'd like to stand up and just say, "Bye now." Congratulations. So when I took over as an administrator, I was always told, "Good luck with the union presidents." Because it was always an us-versus-them mentality. And anybody that knows me knows that's not my mentality. And so I wanted to thank Angie and John, but he's not here. So Angie and John are not going to be the union co-presidents come May 31st, I think. So as a small token of my appreciation, I wanted to thank you for the relationship that we've had. And anyone that's been involved with the contract or watched that develop for the last two or three months here could see what payoff we had from the positive relationships that we have, not just with John and Angie, but with the entire team and staff. So on behalf of board and the administration, I would like you to come forward and give a little gift. And this one's for John. But he's gonna be on my list tomorrow. I'm not coming. So I'll personally deliver this to him though tomorrow. So thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. And that concludes the superintendent's report for tonight.
All right, thank you, Dr. Parker. Right, it's now time for public participation. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? Okay, seeing no one, we'll conclude the public participation portion of the meeting. And the board will now move into information and discussion items. All right, board. The first item we had was the school activity account reports that were available in the board packet for review. Are there any questions regarding the student activity accounts? All right, the next thing we had was information regarding the high school random drug testing report for the month of April. That was available for review. And Mr. Prior's still here?
He's in the meeting.
Okay. So Mr. Prior's not here, but did anyone have any questions? Did anyone need to call? Very good. And Mrs. Beverly, you're going to present information on the... Oh, you're not. We've got it in the, yeah. So we're all done with the amended budget. We had that as part of our information and discussion items earlier at our 5:30 meeting, as well as we had information on the FY tentative budget. And would Mrs. Bowman please come forward to present information on the one-to-one technology presentations?
Running, yes. Technology works on.
We have somebody here to help, probably.
We'll get started. Before we get started, I guess I'm gonna share some information. But there are lots of committee members here as well. So I wanted to introduce each of them who are here tonight. So the fashion will just stand that you introduce you, and they'll be coming up to the mic at different portions of the presentation. So Natalie Andrews, our co-president, member of the committee. Sam Rappi, Andy Connor, both elementary technology teachers. Sarah Solario, kindergarten teacher. Mary Ann Henry, high school science teacher. We've got Nicole Locher, fifth grade. We'll get into the symmetry there. Amy Stefanski, district librarian. Stephanie Fitzer, second grade. Asher Ratten, seventh grade. And Hannah Dutton, fourth grade, at the center. And then Matt Jones. So with that, we will get started. Really, this committee actually formed before I even came to this district and had been looking at putting one-to-one technology in place for Dunlap. So we really have focused, before I came focused, on why we wanted to recommend one-to-one for the future. So we wanna make sure that we're preparing our students for good, strong literary use of technology. One of the main goals of this initiative, and we'll discuss this throughout the presentation, is just opening up that world of knowledge for students that's gonna extend it beyond the classroom so that they're able to incorporate different projects and things and bring those inside the walls of the classroom. Also, we really wanna make sure that we're making use of different progressive, cutting-edge, and pedagogical mediums to make sure we're improving improvement and student improvement. We really wanna make sure that we are forward-thinking in our decisions and looking at what we're going to do that's best, not just for our students today, but looking down the line as well. So with that being said, some of the research that we did, we looked at the different factors. When you're implementing technology, there's lots of different research out there on what's the best way to do it? How are you gonna go about it? And then what are the student results going to be? Because ultimately, we want our students to be successful. That's the number-one goal of this. We wanna make sure that we're promoting and supporting their development. So these are some factors in looking at districts that were successful in implementing one-to-one technology that really made a difference. And the first of that was focusing on the development for teachers and those professional development opportunities and ways to teach them how to incorporate that into their instruction. So we're currently working right now with the committee. Mrs. Ellis has been working with me on PLC schedules for next year, different ways that we can incorporate technology into the structure we already have in place. Looking at, we had done a PD survey with all of the staff back earlier in the year. And one of the main things they wanted to learn about was Google and different technologies. So our institute date for next year is looking like it's all gonna be technology-based, just to focus on those different skills that the teachers really want to grow and develop. And really looking at for next year, a differentiated approach. That's the thing with technology. Everybody's at different levels. And so we've gotta be able to meet people where they are to help move them along, which is, in essence, can help those students and move them where they need to move to. So that's really those first two points. Point three is just incorporating it into the daily learning schedule. That doesn't mean it needs to be done all day, every day, 24/7. But how can we differentiate for our students and use that technology to help where appropriate? Number four really discusses pedagogy. How are we teaching teachers how to discuss different ways that they're collaborating? Within the pilot, it was great to see as we went out into the classrooms how sometimes students weren't just on their own individual devices. You'd come into classrooms, and the teachers will share more about this. But they're working together. They're working with partners. They're doing different projects. So there's many different ways that that can be incorporated. And that is a symbol of success. Project-based learning, which obviously can be done paper-pencil, but can be utilized through technology as well. And then number seven was a really key piece when we got into this study about making sure that there's strong leadership, support, modeling in place for everyone. This is really something that you'll see throughout the presentation. It's a big part of it. There has to be that support for the teachers. We don't just wanna throw devices into the classrooms because that alone isn't gonna make a difference. It's how we're going about putting that in place. Maddie Andrews and myself, we're able to get out not nearly as much as we would've liked to during the pilot, but to go out and to get into the classrooms and to support the teachers. Oftentimes, we would be there trying to button up to their prep period so that they could ask questions. We would go back and find out where answers for them. And so these contact hours are very important to help them develop what they were doing in the classroom. And we wanna be able to continue that for all of our teachers as much as possible.
Before you move on, so seven factors in correct implementation. How did you determine what successful implementation was? Like, how was successful implementation measured? Was it...
It's not really measured with student results, per se. It's just knowing that it's going to be effectively used in the classroom. Classroom engagement.
Okay.
So these are the goals that have been established by the committee early in the year. We've shared these several times with the board. And we're actually gonna walk through these one step at a time. Here, they're just aligned to those seven factors. How we line those up, we won't move through each of that.
So everything up to this point kind of synthesizes into the goals that we created. From the committee, the seven steps for success was actually a collaboration of... collaboration in itself is a synthesis of six different studies. If you look at the source on that slide, seven factors. If you're searching, you can look on them. We'll present all those different studies. But what it all kind of narrows down to is making sure that you check what's been done. If you've put success in millions of those important meetings and not discussed that history, it's a good thing. We learn best from it. So moving forward, we make sure that curriculum is at the forefront of our implementation should we move forward with this. And make sure that we continue to review, refine, and tailor those specific individual needs of our students. Make sure that it's done in a way that the staff is comfortable with. So again, making sure that we're supporting our teachers and not, you have a book read through faculty meetings and sharing hours and just making it part of the culture that this is how it's going to be. Again, continuously plug and support the teachers. And as the different steps for implementation and goals we had created and have made the focus of our pilot, we would make the focus of one-to-one implementation in our district. We would keep the one-to-one technology on page our primary focus. And that's how we would measure success. Not, in which you will see if you have that, which I think we have that too, to review the panel page. It's very heavily dependent on the actions taken by teachers and educators in the district. So it's not measuring success in the classroom because of many different factors that go into place that you can look at. Different cohorts of kids are gonna have different success, different magic that you would have. So it really wouldn't be an accurate depiction of doing that. Which, again, that source, that slide just slides ago, handily points to that it's more about how it's implemented and how teachers are supported. That schools and districts have seen success with incorporating technology in the classroom, not just giving technology for technology's sake because it looks cool. Making sure that it's being used as an instructional tool and it's becoming a part of the school's building.
That, your plan on the page, I thought, was phenomenal. I liked how it incorporated into our strategic goals and followed those through and then made it relevant to, yeah, that, with the digital technology. It's excellent.
So trying to incorporate it into our culture, but at the same time, whereas the strategic plan is pretty solid, through 2021, ours will be a little different and will change. And a lot of these things are either established and not, or we realize that other things would need to be added.
Heather, could we move that podium back so when everyone speaks, the lights not... I can get, no, you sit down. We'll get it.
They're not blinded.
Yeah.
Okay. So goal number one was to provide equitable access to technology for all students. So the first piece of this is consistent access. And one of the things the committee first looked at was bring-your-own-device policy. Would that be an option that would work for us here in Dunlap? Many of our students do have devices at home already. And so would that be something feasible? But what we really came to discover was it could be quite an obstacle. You've got a third of your class bringing a Mac and a third bringing a PC and a third who maybe don't have a device at all. It's gonna be difficult to implement instruction in an effective and equal way. So that was really where we narrowed that down and realized that wasn't a viable option for us. Testing is another difficulty with creating that equitable access. Currently, much standardized testing is already computerized. And you can't have a home device to take those assessments on. So that has to be on a school-led device. Also, equitable access to technology. Just taking sure, teachers wanna make sure they're meeting the needs of all of our students. We're taking a look at our mission of empowering all students. So we wanna make sure that that's happening effectively. And then we wanna make sure that we are able to provide information on affordable internet to families who may need it. So there are two options within the Dunlap area. One is called Comcast Internet Essentials and the other is this MediaCom everyone-on. Both of those, if students qualify for free and reduced lunch, they can qualify for internet for $9.95 a month. One of the challenges with these that I've been on both of these sites is that you apply online. So obviously, we would have to open up... We'd have to open up our buildings, which we could easily do, set up times for those families to come in, to, you know, to use a Chromebook, to sit down, to be familiar with the devices, and then they can sign up for those. I think there are some options to go around the other way, but that's the initial thing he says, to do it online. So we would need to provide a way for families to be able to do that. But I think that that's an option. Whether we go one-to-one or not, I think that's an option that's great for us to promote to our families so that they have that internet access at home.
Do our families know that today?
I don't know that they do. We do...
I thought we did a while.
Yeah, it's been probably...
Before I was here.
It wouldn't hurt to put it back out.
To people who don't have...
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. No, that's true.
You know what? They have it on their phone. Anything to share at the beginning of the year, and those welcome back to school.
Or take a flyer after they get approved for free and reduced, from a maybe Lisa Lightin. Somehow, we approve them, send that information back out. Because obviously, we try and empower school.
Did you look at the option of a program to provide computers to, or devices to people who are on free and reduced lunch as an alternative?
To what?
To a one-to-one for everybody?
No, because that still would've presented the challenge of people bringing other devices that might not all be the same.
Oh.
So that would be, I mean, we didn't look at that in essence, but because of that same philosophy, that would've been difficult.
Hey, Matt, can you grab that microphone? There we go. Thanks, Becky.
Okay. Also, along with the equitable access, this is our current portable devices available within the district. So you can see all the different ratios over there on the right. And this is, to no fault, but we've had some fabulous PTOs who have donated thousands upon thousands of dollars with different devices to our schools, which has been phenomenal. But we have done, different buildings have had different priorities or different focuses, or PTOs have wanted to spend on different things. So we've created this inequity when it comes to the ratios of what technology is available to our students and to our teachers to use within the classrooms, which is something we would really like to utilize and could be done through this program. With that, goal two, enhancing learning experiences, I am going to turn it over to some of the teachers to share some information about their experiences in the classroom.
Hi. Again, I'm Mary Ann Henry. I teach here at Honey School. I teach honors chemistry and forensic science. Those were my forensic classes that were part of the pilot for this. And initially, when we got the devices, I'm not the most technologically savvy person, so I was a little intimidated. And I started using it first kind of as a substitution. Instead of giving them a worksheet, I gave them a Google Doc. You know, we kind of eased into it that way. But within the first couple weeks, we had a project where they had to research some sort of a toxin, a case where somebody used a toxin and they had to talk about the chemistry behind that toxin and that sort of thing. And we had done that project in the past, and it had always been a PowerPoint presentation. And, but the kids had the devices now. And it was immediately, they started bringing it up to me. Do we have to do PowerPoint? We could do a website. Could we do a pull-off? Could we do a video? You know? And I was like, oh, yeah, we probably can. I have no idea, but let's figure it out. And so it was really fun to see them explore everything. And I think they had no fear of clicking around and figuring out how to make all of that work. So that was really neat to see. And then when it was time for the presentation, in the past, again, they would have to break their flash drive in, and I would put it in my laptop and put it up on the smartboard. And what we did this time is that I had a Chromecast from home that I could plug in. And so we set it up just kind of like this, like a board meeting. And they sat at the front with their device. They could send their screen up and, you know, present it right from there. And kids even went further than that and created interactive quizzes and stuff at the end to see if their classmates were paying attention. And so the kids all had their devices, and they could put the answers up on the screen. And we could track who was getting what right and who was paying attention, who wasn't. And so after that, I was kind of, you know, we had a lot more open-ended projects And so after that, I was kind of, you know, we had a lot more open-ended projects where I was more like, well, you guys think we can do it with this? And so it, the main benefits that I saw out of this whole experience, one was there's automatic differentiation. With that first project, I didn't have to say anything about it. The kids that were not so great with technology did the PowerPoint, that was fine. And the kids that were a little more advanced, you know, went further and further with it. So another thing I saw was the ability for seamless period. I could say, you share this with this person, comment on theirs, give feedback before they would turn it in to me. Another thing was my ability to see what they're doing. I could see what they're doing the entire class period because their documents were shared with me. So there's that accountability that they have, that they know I can check in and I don't have to walk over to them or warn them, I'm coming. And a lot of students appreciated the fact that I didn't have to come over to their desk and say in front of their peers, this paragraph isn't so good, you know, we need to rework that. I could just send them a private note. They would get it, respond to me, make the corrections, and it was just between us. So that was another feature, really, really quick feedback that they could get. And then there's absolutely no downtime. We don't have to walk to the lab, they get logged in, they do the procedure, they walk in, get it, get started. So, and just to speak to what we were talking about a minute ago, I did have, at the beginning, a few students that wanted to bring their own device and I didn't really see the problem with it until they started. And some of them were saying, well, this doesn't work on mine, how does this work? And so we did waste a little bit of time at the beginning with me trying to figure out what they had brought in and I finally said, no, we're all using this, we got it here, this is what we're going to do. And after that, we didn't have those problems. So overall, I felt it was an excellent experience for me and for the students, so thank you.
Good evening again, I'm Hannah and I teach fourth grade at the Nerd. And one of the things that I saw was a great benefit of the pilot experience was how it served as a good organizational tool for students. I saw firsthand how my students used their Google account, their access to the Google Drive and Canvas as a means for keeping themselves organized. The Google account and the Google Drive, it houses all of their work in one place that they have access to at any time from any device that has internet access. And it was a great weapon for keeping their work organized, keeping the things that they need all in one place. And as Mary Ann mentioned, the ability to share with other people and then them have the shared documents within their Google Drive as well. The Canvas portion was really beneficial because that kept everything that we did for each subject all housed in one place. The students had access to upcoming assignments, upcoming modules and videos that they'd be learning about. They knew all the due dates in one place, everything that they needed, directions, rubrics, tools for submitting assignments was all housed in one place. So it was really nice to use technology as a way of keeping students organized and on top of their work and what they needed to do. Another success that I saw from the pilot was the quality of work produced through these new tools. I have a few students in my class that are really reluctant writers, particularly when it comes out to handwriting because of their dexterity and their abilities. And the students use the tools on the devices such as the speech-to-text feature. And one student's writing, one of the persons of the year, he dressed her vensively just because he had this different piece of technology to help him really express himself. And that was a big success that we saw in my classroom.
I'm Ace Monti, I'm the district librarian. I just want to talk real quick on the essence of the labs. And Mary Ann had kind of alluded to this, is we, with our standard labs being the way that they are and that we have to move to them, it cuts up a lot of our classroom time. So we have, I take care of lab schedules at high school and at DMS, and I know that at Valley, we all take care of it kind of on a Google Doc, so teachers sign up for lab times. It's much more flexible at the secondary level and at the elementary level in some of the buildings. Those teachers have like permanent lab times that they're accustomed to, like every Friday is lab writing time. And what happens is because of the, because of our schedules at times, sometimes we get booted out of labs or there's a snow day. And so our teaching becomes impaired because of our lab schedule time. And there, we have some teachers that they can't change their lesson plans or they change them differently, I guess you could say, because they can't, because it's so hard to get a lab, especially within the high school, within the last month or so with EEP testing taking place, the science test taking place, ACT taking place, our labs have been virtually taken from us. And so our teachers are scrambling to get lab times. And it's really, really hard for them to change their lesson plans around. And we're losing that time, being able to do research and the kids being able to use this time. So having the devices in the classroom senses to a seamless work in your lesson plans and being able to move, it lends itself to the differentiation towards the lessons. So, you know, having a group of students be able to go from one project to another because they're maybe ahead of schedule and then keeping that one group and working with them one-to-one and having different groups within their learning environment in the classroom. So we know that removing those students from the classroom and putting them into a different environment can sometimes compete that educational process. Especially if you teach for the first 10 minutes in the classroom and then move to a lab, that's five minutes in the hallway that you have just, you know, hearded your little cats. Sometimes you've hearded them down the hallway and there are things that get into our way that makes it really hard for us. So it's enhancing that learning experience by just that physical logistics of having the devices in the classroom.
I'm Stephanie, I teach kindergarten at Hickory Grove. When I first got my iPads, I thought, ooh, what apps can I download? But we abused them for so much fun and that. We actually did a research project where they had to find National Geographic Kids. So we got on, to support, we got on the National Geographic Kids. So there's 23 kindergartners and one of me. So I didn't do it for them, they did it. And then they searched their favorite animal and they, some of them read, some of them just read the pictures and wrote a research about their favorite animal. And we've done this before where it's just been like cats and dogs because that's what they know about. But this year, it was koalas and flamingos and penguins and rattlesnakes and all different, different animals that they don't normally do because they don't normally know about them. But then they took it a step further and during recess times, they were able to get on. And I had two little boys who are not, do not love to write, wrote a book about, they researched like six different animals and they wrote a book about all these different animals using National Geographic Kids dot com, which was really cool. And then I also wanted to share that we have used our iPads for more than just math reading, science, social studies. We actually did a lesson in second step where we were able to, we're talking about feelings. So the kids were able to turn the cameras around into selfies and they took pictures of their faces when they were mad, when they were sad, when they were disappointed, when they were frustrated, so that they could see what their face looks like when they're feeling like that. And then they were able to video themselves doing their calm-down strategy and then watch it so that they know what it should look like and able to practice it. So it was, we were using it for more than just our standard math, science.
I'm Nicole Lozier, I teach in grade 5 at Redview. And one thing I wanted to talk about with communication, that's goal number three. We talked a lot, you know, we always think teacher-to-parent and school-to-home type communication. But with this pilot program, I've really seen communication between the students be enhanced. I have students who are taking videos of themselves on their device and sending it, like sending, giving directions, doing screenshots of directions on how to, you know, upload a Google Doc or how to paste a picture into an assignment. And they're videotaping themselves, giving those directions and then sharing it through Canvas so that other students can watch. And it really, not only has opened communication between the kids, which sounds silly because a lot of times we think of, you know, devices and screen time and it limits our communication. But it's really provided kids with a new way to communicate, not really new for them but maybe for some of us. But in more of a leadership role and it also helps simulations and one teacher to 23 kids. When I have kids that are taking on that leadership role, it's really great for them but it really creates an environment where we're all learning from each other. So I feel like up here, there's a lot of communication that we see, you know, with newsletters and parents and things, but I also feel like it's, the devices have enhanced the communication between students and learning. And, well, I have a little story, but I have no. So we were park testing and of course, my house got hit with the stomach flu. So I was like, seriously? And so of course, I had to have a sub during park testing, which is never ideal. And so I sent all the kids, when they came in that morning, I was on my, the night forest was almost on the couch and I videotaped myself with this little motivational speech in my jammies like, okay, guys, we're going to do park testing, I'm sorry I can't be there, but, and so when they opened their Chromebooks, they had this like announcement from me, you know? And who knows if it worked. But it's a great opportunity for them to, for me to interact with them even when I'm not there. So that's been really rewarding, we'll see what happens, the results.
I'm Stephanie, I teach second grade. And one of the cool things that I've noticed about the communication is how it's been classrooms, a glass classroom. It's no longer just the four walls of my classroom, the learning extends all day, every day. An example being, I had a similar situation with stomach flu in my family and I was not able to be there for a couple of assignments. Canvas has video directions that I can give, so I was able to videotape myself giving the students directions that I could have written for a sub, but instead I was able to use my animation and my excitement for learning to get them excited about learning. The other great thing was there was a couple of students that were absent and were unable to attend school. And they actually emailed me through their parent and asked if they could work on their assignments for call. And I think that's one of the coolest things about this pilot too, is that students are motivated to continue learning even when I didn't prompt them or encourage them to do so. They're taking the initiative, they want to continue their learning. And, and then once they found out that other kids were doing it, that they wanted to do it too. So I feel like it's that bug and it's that buzz that catches and kids are excited about it.
Goal four is developing and promoting digitally responsible citizens. This is something the committee's talked quite a bit about. And so I'll turn it over to the committee to talk about that.
Kami Brown, I teach the technology instruction for the A5, both at Redview and then 45 at Hickory Grove.
And I teach technology at Hickory Grove and Allen.
Internet safety has been an important part of our technology curriculum, especially since the Illinois mandate in 2009. And this is a list of everything that is taught by grade level, with the addition of kindergarten through second grade, teaching more in the classroom and sort of technology-based using some books that have been designed for young learners.
And the more we use technology, the more we're going to see less of the isolated lessons like this and we will see a more daily integration and more collaboration between the technology teachers and the classroom teachers so that all the students get a deeper understanding of digital citizenship.
And then the only other thing on here was that purchase of GoGuardian and Matt was going to share a little about that.
GoGuardian is a piece of software and there are other software out there that we're looking at, but this is the one that most schools are using currently. And what it is, it's actually an internet filter that will go home with the device. There are districts right now in the area that when they go home, their internet access is not filtered. So you can potentially bring stuff back to the school, download stuff that obviously we wouldn't necessarily prove of. So this is a filter that actually goes home. The teachers can control the devices that are in their classroom. You can actually administratively look at the devices. And also it has like a find my iPhone feature, which the Chromebook doesn't have, so that way we can locate lost or stolen, hopefully not stolen, but lost Chromebooks, you know, if they would, if that would happen. Definitely very important to have the internet filter when they get home.
Does PND have, the Purion Notre Dame, do they have that feature?
I'm not sure because my rationale why I'm not sure is that technically they're bring your own device because I think it's technically your device. I think the, it's in their tuition, so I think the students are actually leasing it from the school, but the school doesn't own it. Like when they graduate, it takes it with them, so I'm not sure.
Notre Dame does that way?
Correct. So technically, it's not there, so I'm not sure if you can install it. I think there might be somebody here with.
Karen.
It belongs to the student.
Right. So do you have Go?
So like administratively, we may not be able to apply something like bring your own device.
Do you have that software on yours?
Kids probably brought Facebook at home, right?
They brought Facebook at home.
Right.
But the parents can choose if they want one and they may have software built that is.
Goal five is, we've talked a little bit about this, extending the guided learning beyond the walls of the classroom. We have a couple more teachers who are going to share a little bit more of that.
Okay, so this has been really cool in my kindergarten classroom. So the first thing that we did, every year we do an observation log with eagles. And this year, we did it with the DC eagles, Mr. President, personally. And the kids were able to get on whenever they wanted to on their iPads and they knew how to get onto the internet. We set up the website so that they could independently get on. And so they observed for five days and reported and all that type. Well, then during other times, they would get on and watch these eagles grow. So they've seen them from eggs, baby chicks, and now they're gigantic. If you ever just Google DC eagle cam, they're like ugly. They're like black eagles, they're really weird. But they've got to see them progress and so they've got to see them develop from like their blues, their baby feathers. We got to watch one hatch, actually. Like you could see it poking through, it hatched over eggs. So we didn't get to watch it hatch, but they go on the weekends at home, they want to look at this website. And they've also learned how to take the webcam and shrink it and put it in the corner so like if they're on something else, they can still see the eagles die in the corner. I still don't know how they do it, none of them have taught me, but they teach, they teach others or do it for others, but they won't tell me. The coolest thing that has happened with extending the walls of the classroom, every year we do a grandparents' day. And I had a little boy who, he's very emotional, but his mom has a one-year-old at home and they don't have any family around here, so she wasn't able to come. Grandparents are in Colorado, daddy had work, so nobody was going to be able to come. And she asked if she could come and bring the baby. And I explained to her that with 125 kindergartners at two grandparents a pop, that's a lot of people in cafeteria and we'd rather not. I offered some solutions and she said, can we FaceTime it? So grandma and grandpa got to FaceTime in for grandparents' day with my little boy and they, he got to take his iPad down to the classroom and show him the classroom and he got to teach him the sign language that goes along with the song. And they got to see the picture of him holding, holding them for his quilt square. And so it was, it was really cool and it was absolutely a meltdown divertive because it would have been, even though he wouldn't have been the only kid there without a grandparent, he would have been very upset about it. So it was definitely an amazing experience for him that he was able to do that.
Extending the walls of the classroom into my area, as I said before, the district librarian. I don't have a home base, so I travel between the three secondary schools. I spend one day a week at DMS, one day a week at Valley, and two days a week at the high school permanently and Wednesday's my only day that I can travel between schools. So it's been a challenge this year for me to get out, back into the classroom. As some of you know, I taught for five years in the district in various different areas, so I miss my kids. So I'd like to get back out to the classroom. And when I started the position and I joined the pilot team, one of the things that we had noticed is that we didn't have any databases anymore within the district. It was something that was held with the budget a couple of years ago. It was part of that library budget that is small. And so what we did is we worked together to bring those databases back in for the pilot program. This was really important for us, if we're going to get these kids' devices and the opportunity to learn on them, we need to give them the research. And it's been a small personal mission of mine to stop Googling things. We just can't Google things for us for a bit. We can for a small portion of our life, but in the academic world, we can't. And it's not something that we can teach our kids, especially the high schoolers that are going off to college, it's not going to be acceptable. So it was really important, so we were able to secure Gail for the semester. And so I dived into it and I taught myself to use Gail and it integrates with Google, which has been phenomenal this year. And the kids can go into Gail and they can save documents straight into their Google Drive and they can share, it's amazing. However, I do PD for our teachers in all three buildings and it's a 20-minute session with them on hundreds of different stuff, sites, it's great. However, those things leave and we go on and we teach our lessons and then we come back and we're like, what did she say? I don't know what's going on. So the really awesome thing that I've been able to is using the devices this year. I've been able to remote into at least three classrooms this semester and be able to actually be up on the smartboard, teaching live in three of the classrooms while I'm at another location. So actually, one location being down the hallway from that classroom because I wasn't able to leave the library. So I was able to remote in, share my screen, show the kids while they're on their devices, they were doing it as I was doing it on the screen. One, I was at, it was a morning that I was at Valley and I had some downtime. And I was able to schedule time with that teacher at the high school. It was 10 minutes, it was an entire class period, but I was able to go on and teach because I'm an expert at what I do, they're an expert at what they do. So I was able to teach the kids from my own view as well, which was really cool. My face is really large on the screen and they think it's awesome because I'm actually in the library and then I got the kids behind me. But it's a lot of fun and I think that it's something else. And I'm like, teachers, as well, we had talked a little about with, like we will hang out, that teachers can access it, is that we can also communicate without leaving our space. our space. And so things like PLCs next year, that if I needed for 10 minutes in a meeting here, and I needed here, there's no more travel time. We can just Google hangout. There can be a bunch of us, and I can pop in and out. And so it's a, it's a positive thing, and the teacher and the PD, I'm on our side, and then even with the kids, so when it's a lot of fun. And I know that Canvas has some inner abilities and some chat features that makes that collaboration much easier, especially with my time being so limited, because I travel so much, and I need it in different places at different times. But I always have a little chunk of time that I can dedicate back to my teachers in the classroom. So it's a really awesome experience doing that.
Both Sarah and Amy talked about students virtually leaving the classrooms with the devices, and I kind of have an office experience where a student is able to virtually join our classroom through the use of the devices. There was a student who left for a family trip to India on Way 6, and they're now with us for the rest of the school year, but his parents are concerned about some of the work that he's been missing and some of the assignments. And through Canvas, he has been able to participate in the last few assignments of the year, including this article that he was able to finish on the plane ride. And then he submitted it to us through Canvas, and his article is now in our school newspaper that we made. And it's just been wonderful, because I know that we have had, having a lot of energy to handle. A lot of students go on extended leaves or visit family overseas, and this enables them to still be a part of the classroom without teachers putting together a packet of work, assuming when they'll be learning, they can stay up to date with what we're doing with the due dates and when there is certain classes due.
And just to add to what Hannah said there, it's fabulous that child had a device, that they were able to do that, but that's one thing that, you know, if somebody didn't have a device, that would be a benefit then of us providing these devices also. So with that, Matt will briefly talk about the devices here.
Sure. Well, we talked a whole lot about curriculum up to this point, so we need to figure out a device that would also work with the curriculum that we're trying to, trying to develop. So we had a demo day where we brought in about eight different devices, tablets, Chromebooks, different styles of Chromebooks, iPads, and everyone here in the district has a PC, so we obviously know what those look like. The team chose a touchscreen Chromebook, which is, lasts for about 10 hours, which should last through the school day, fully charged. You can also write on the screen with your finger. You can touch it. You can do, you know, whatever you need to as far as filling out assignments potentially in the future and other things of that nature. And that will be for grades two through 12. And then K1, the iPad, we actually did, the pilot was with iPads, as Solario mentioned, and that seems to be the best solution for those particular grade levels, because there isn't the complexity of the logins, and there's a lot more educational apps that'll work on the iPad than it does on the Chromebook for that age group. And with that, we also found a case that would match for the Chromebooks. You can see a picture there up on the screen. It's waterproof. It's military resistant as far as cushioning. It can be monogrammed, colored, et cetera. We actually had some staff, I said, well, can't they just go home in the bookbag? And they said, well, they put water bottles in the bookbags. They put this in the bookbag. So it'd be better to provide a carrying case for these particular devices, in that way that we're ensuring that they're kept nice for a four-year period. At least, that's our goal, is a four-year period. So it's been a great pilot with the touchscreen Chromebook. It wasn't necessarily, it's a more expensive choice, but we have realized through the pilot that the pros definitely outweigh the cons of an extra $45 a device because of the handwriting ability. It's almost like we're marrying the iPad and a PC together for still a horrible price. You know, I mean, it's still a sub $300 device currently on the market.
So with that, we take a look at what the recommendation of the committee is for rollout. So this next school year, we would really just maintain our current pilot classrooms. Nothing would go into place until the 1718 school year. At that point, we would roll out to all students in grades four through eight. iPads that are within the district would be shifted down to grades K through 1, and there would be Chromebooks then at those middle school levels that could be shifted up to the high school. So there would be a Chromebook cart at that point available for each department at the high school level. And then elementary would stay current with what they have. They have some Chromebook carts available within the buildings, and the pilot classrooms would continue to keep those devices K free. In 1819, then, we would add on with the high school. You see their sophomores through seniors, because those eighth graders would be rolling up to freshmen, so those devices would just, you wouldn't have to purchase for that group, but you would have to repurchase for your fourth grade coming in, because that's your youngest grade level there. At that point, we would have those other carts. Those other 270 touchscreen devices would be available for different replacements, checkouts, different things that needed to be done, so we wouldn't have to purchase any, many extras at that point or time. And there would still be carts available for those second and third grade students. And then, at that point, we would have some devices that would be starting to age out, so those could be retired or maybe some kept for parts. And then, in the 1920 school year, then, the third year of the rollout, is when we would add kindergarten and first grade with iPads, but that would be at a 1 to 2 ratio. So if you have a class of 24 students, you would have 12 iPads available for that class. So not looking at 1 to 1 for K1, but 1 to 2. And then, Chromebooks would be added for grades 2 and 3. I have, we would only have to purchase them for grade 3, because those seniors who would be graduating that previous year, then those devices could be transitioned down to those second graders. So you don't have to purchase for everybody there, but that's the rotation of how that would work. Annually, then thereafter, you would be on a device refresh cycle every four years for the devices. We did look at something we learned throughout this committee work, is that the Chromebooks do have a life.
They do have a life.
On them. Or end life, and updating end life.
There is an expiration date, that we just assume that, well, Google's Google, and that they're just going to work for forever, but they actually do have a end of life, which is in 2021, or 2000, late 2020, on a particular device that we just purchased this year, which we thought was a little less, but their assumption is that the devices are going to be refreshed, and that the, kind of similar when you buy a new computer at home, that there are going to be more capabilities by improving, the model will be improving over those four years before it gets to end of life.
And what's the fail rate before the end of life? I know we talked about if we purchased the insurance, it would be $131 per device. So that seems to be estimating a kind of a high fail rate, or are they just trying to make money off of that, or what?
Well, it depends, because the insurance covers things like, some of them are theft, which the rate for theft goes up. You know, there are different levels of plans. So if you do, theft is one. Another one is batteries. A lot of times, batteries are considered consumables, and insurance doesn't cover batteries. Battery is one of the major replacements that happen. So there's a different level of insurance if you want mechanical failure. You know, so that's why it drives the rate up. So when you think about us, that rate's so high, because we may have all of those options. We've seen breakage rates anywhere from 7% in some districts to 13%.
What did you say, what rates?
Between 7 and 13.
Breakage.
Breakage.
Breakage rates. You know, it really depends on the durability of the machine. That's why, could we buy a $140 Chromebook today? Absolutely. But I think our breakage rate would be like 70% after two years, or the battery may only last for two and a half years, because it's going to be constantly charged, you know, all the time. It needs to be brought to school every day. So by spending a little bit more money, it's kind of, I feel like we will be able to extend that, the future, extend that lifetime of the device a little bit longer than what we normally could. Because I know there are some districts in the area that are buying, you know, $200 or sub $200 Chromebooks, but I can see them maybe on a three-year cycle, whereas us are hoping to get that fourth year.
But you are expecting a 10% kind of failure?
Probably. It's tough to judge. You know, I have read and talked to other tech coordinators and said, what is, you know, what is your breakage rate? Some said it was low. Some said it was high. Now, a lot of people with iPads have a high one, because the screen's cracked, so, because the screen is outwardly displayed, they have a lot of, oh, drop it, like, you probably shattered your phone. You know, I mean, everybody's shattered their phone, probably, I hope. And, you know, and that's where they run these bigger breakage rates, so.
So what's your estimate in your numbers? What's the breakage rate? What, I mean, what was the assumption in the numbers?
I think we're probably in the 15 to 20%.
Okay.
And I think it's also going to depend on the age group. I think we may see that 4 through 8, not necessarily care about the device more, but I feel like the younger kids, I mean, you know, you talk, they cherish, you know, they want to have that device every day, whereas a high school might be more, you know, I've got to get to a game, I'm just going to throw it into this case, and, you know, I think we'll have more breakages for accidental damage, whereas I think the, and they're also going to change class periods, you know, every hour, whereas, you know, some of the lower grades wouldn't necessarily do that. So they're not going to be carrying it around like this from classroom to classroom, or, you know.
But it's 15 to 20 average?
It seems to be. We haven't seen anybody that are in the 50s or 70s.
I mean, in your numbers, that's what you figured for?
Yeah.
Okay, cost-wise.
So the other piece that goes with this is staffing and support, and that was really what we talked about at the beginning of this, too. So we would need some additional technology staffing. We currently just have two staff members, Matt and John. And so with the addition, the infusion of that many devices into the district, you would have to add some additional tech support staff there as well. So you can see each year, we were looking at adding one for a total of five over that three-year rollout. And then, support staff for instruction. We were looking at, you know, things staying pretty current right now, but then, as we would infuse those devices to add some different instructional coaching positions, and that's really what I talked about earlier this year, that Matt Andrews and I had gone out into the classroom for just these 11 pilot teachers, but them being able to support that many more teachers, they need to have that opportunity to co-teach with one another, to troubleshoot with one another, to say, I really want to do this lesson. Can you give me a great app that's going to support me in helping this? And so that would be the role of those people, really providing that classroom support on a daily basis to be able to help them infuse that pedagogy that we're going to be teaching throughout, throughout the time. I did put a note here at the bottom, just to keep in mind. Staffing needs would always be approved annually by the board. That's something we've always got to look at, the big picture of everything, but it would definitely be a priority for this. So these are the overall costs of what the deployment would be and the numbers that we figured it off of, so we can have that there, but I can show you at the end how that all comes together. The device cost, you can see, are $265 for the Chromebooks. The iPad is $474. There's that management license piece. I don't know if you want to.
It's a $25, but it's one-time. And it's, it's not just a device, so, you know, if we have 50 break, and we get 50 new ones, those licenses transfer. So effectively, we're going to buy one license for every student 2 through 12, one-time. Is essentially how that works.
And are there going to be extra ones in the classroom, like, say, somebody's breaks, or they don't charge their battery, or what happens when a kid, you know, something happens and they can't?
We've had a lot of conversations about that. In talking with other devices, or other devices, other districts, some districts have said that they really, they treat it like a textbook. You know, if you forget your textbook, there's a consequence for forgetting that. You figure it out pretty quick that you're going to want to have that there. There would be a few backups if something would happen during the day, if there was a break, but I don't see us putting in charging stations everywhere, doing anything. It's part of coming to class, being prepared for what we're going to do.
Yeah, I have the same question written down, just that if, like, if we leave it at home, so you're running, and, oh, I thought it was my backpack, I don't have it. Because the good thing is that it makes the student more organized, because you have all your assignments and documents in one place, but are they able to access those documents? Because then you would miss everything for the whole day.
If you had a different device, you could access all of those, yes.
So there's extra.
With like logging into your email.
Right.
Different devices.
They could, yes. Because Amy, you talked about possibly the libraries having a few.
Checkouts, yeah. Checkout stations.
We did, like, this year, in this rollout at the high school this year, like, PTO at the high school just approved six Chromebooks just for the library, because we're operating the Chromebooks on cards right now. And we've had such an increase of people being like, I just need one. I'm like, I can't give you one, because they're not numbered, and they're not hardcoded, and the liability of them leaving the card is much higher. So what we did this year is I conditioned PTOs, we're going to give you six Chromebooks, but using our Destiny system.
Awesome.
That we're getting this year at the high school and that's throughout the district, we spark it, and then we just check it out to a kid. It's in the system. They bring it back, we check it back in. If they leave with it, we know where to, I mean, we have the, they're at the GoGuardian, so we know that these are building, but it's in the system.
So is six enough?
Well, no, but I mean, like, in the coming years.
It's a start.
For the next year, the coming years, are we at the, are we at the high school is going to be different? But once all the kids have it, no, then we would, we would position to whatever that percentage would be, but the library could handle it.
And I went back here, remember, in that second year of implementation, we'll have those additional 270 devices that then could be utilized for some of that, for that, some of that, those purposes.
1819.
1819. And the high school has a whole bunch of iPads, too. 60 iPads in the library, so.
Can they use those?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, for, will they be able to use those?
Canvas is, is it device-specific? So you could be on a cell phone, or an iPad, or a Mac, or a PC, and it would still, it's kind of why we chose that particular platform that way. It didn't really matter necessarily if you were sitting on the bus with your cell phone, you could at least do something.
Or at home when you're.
Right. And that's what some districts said, too. If a child forgot their laptop, they said, well, you know, get out your phone, you'll have to make, do with the best you can for today, and then get caught up, so. Insurance recommendation, this is where, we had looked at all sorts of different options as far as insurance went, but we really decided to go with a self-funded option, which would, that's where Matt was talking about, the percentages, and we would start with $50,000 in startup parts for costs. We would be increasing the technology fee to $50. So these figures here are taking, 25 of those dollars have been applied towards devices, and 25 would be applied towards insurance to help be able to purchase some of those parts. I mean, you would have to have, you know, extra screens on hand, extra motherboards on hand, extra chargers on hand, different things, so that as those breakages took place, we were able to repair those. And that first year would be key to be, we'll be tracking all of those stats to see what our actual numbers were, to then be able to project for the future what we would need to do down the road.
Or if we need to purchase insurance.
Right.
Because if, I mean, we're able to buy it on the second year, the third, or the fourth, you know, so it's one of those things where if we think we're going to be, you know, really upside down after the, after year one, it'll make more sense to, to go the insurance route.
So what is the cost per device for self-insuring versus regular insurance?
Well, it kind of, it's, it kind of is based on, like, for example, if they break the keyboard, it's, I think it's on your next slide.
It is. Average, supposed to be the average. If it's $131 for regular insurance, what's the average cost for self-insurance? Would that be just the cost of the parts and the cost of the staff divided by the number of devices, or what?
Correct. So you'd be taking that additional staff member, let me get through these next couple slides, because it might make a little more sense.
Okay.
So this is, so then, how the repair cost would work then with the self-insurance is, the first, the first breakage that somebody would have would be 100% on the district. So we would be covering the cost of that first breakage, and this is all within one school year. But let's say you've got a second breakage. Then we're going to split with you, we're going to go 50/50. We're going to say the family's responsible for 50%, the district is responsible for 50%. If you have a third break within this school year, then we're going to a 20/80 model, where the district would be responsible for 20, the student would be responsible for 80%, and then that fourth repair, at that point, the device is probably beyond repair, and so that's where there would be the expectation to be replacing the entire device. And then, those are the different replacement costs over there on the left.
And is that based on a device breaking because of the student's activity, or say, it's just a?
A fluke.
Yeah.
You're correct. It's more or less like student vandalism or things like that. You know, crack screen, is it something that just happens? I mean, we actually have staff members that break their screens. You know, they'll put a pencil on, you know, on top of the keyboard, and then they shut it.[1678.73] I know there's probably some people grinning back there because it's probably happened to them. And, you know, it'll be things like that where, where it was, it's something that the students could have actually prevented.
So that's the only time they'll have to pay, is when it was their fault?
In my opinion, it would be. I mean, I can't see them paying for the motherboard failing, or, you know, or the battery, or the battery only lasting a year. I mean, these are things that...
I consider that a tech issue.
Exactly.
Yes.
Exactly.
Could be a lemon.
It's only a lemon, like, right.
Purely them getting mad and punching the screen, or something along those lines.
And do other districts have issues where people dispute that?
I did not come across anybody who brought that up where it was disputed.
I've only seen one... I've only seen one where it was on the fourth repair, the parents wanted to keep the device because they felt that they were paying for a new device. They felt that they needed ownership of the broken one because they might try and fix it themselves or whatnot. And the answer was that the school can't technically sell you anything. You know, we're, we have to destroy it, you know, through you guys here at the Board of Education and things like that. So those are the only times that I've run into it yet.
The other piece that we were looking at as a part of this, the self-insurance, is incorporating a technology class into the high school. And so this would be something that we could add in the summer of 2017. If this were to be approved, we would bring you a formal course approval in fall, just like we do any year with course approvals. But it would just be teaching students about standards of technology, diagnosing computer problems, the organization, updating the systems, how to take care of the escalating tickets, customer service, workflow management. Angie Stansfield and I had developed some of these lists. She's one of the business teachers at the high school. And Matt had contributed to some of that, too. And then that would give us a candidate pool to then hire some summer and school year assistants from several high school students who would be able to help with troubleshooting, repair of devices. And they could work before or after hours or have a study hall release and be paid an hourly rate to be able to help assist with some of that. So that's something we would definitely like to incorporate with this.
And this would be an optional course?
Absolutely, yep.
That's a neat idea.
Yep.
There's a school district up north in Leyton, which is where Nick Poliak from IBC is at now. And they, I sat for a webinar, I think, with Lisa from the IPA, and they closed 97% of all the help desk tickets the students do.
Say that again.
They close 97% of all of the help desk tickets the student class does throughout the day. You know, I mean, they do everything from the repair to, "I can't log into Google." I mean, they do everything. It's really helped them.
That's great.
Not, that's why they can hire, you know, limited IT staff and not have to have one person in every building, or two, you know, at the size of our high school. I mean, you could theoretically have two, probably.
The staffing costs here with the tech support and curriculum support staff, you can see where the different numbers would be with adding those different staff members throughout the year and what the totals would be there as well. And then, from there, this really gives you, the overall picture is really, I think, what's most important to take a look at. So you've got all the costs over there. The yearly costs are in the column on the right. And then that's less that, the levy, the lease levy for technology and that tech fee. And that's only $25 of that tech fee. So those costs over there would be the yearly costs to the district. And the overall cost of implementing it is this, the $2.263 minus the lease levy and the technology fee. So this would be the total cost to the district over that three-year period.
So what do you mean by that? The total cost is $2.26, right?
Correct.
And the funding would come from the lease levy and the technology fee?
Right.
So the $1.3 would come out of what?
The Ed Fund, as Karen had said. Yep, over a three-year period. Yep, so it would be this, $4.72, the $3.79, and the $4.53.
And Karen, is that part of your projections? When you, when we look at your projections, we say the budget's going to be balanced. You projected that dollar amount, correct?
Okay. And then the annual cost after that is what, 400?
Approximately, yes. And we would be, if we're on that four-year lease levy, and correct me if I'm wrong, we'd have that fourth year of a little bit of reprieve where we could do some other things as far as technology in the district, different things that needed to be done. But then you would be going back on that cycle to replace those devices, yes.
And then Karen, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this, too, from a budget perspective. The costs going forward, those are in there as well, not just...
I think that's on the next slide.
Oh, does? Okay.
They're in the perfect next...
All right.
Yep.
So we'll make sure this is all accounted for.
Yes. Right. And that's, because that's an important piece. You don't want to miss that because it's not just a one-time shot. It would be an ongoing cost that would be a part of that. So that refresh of devices would begin in that '21, '22 school year. Just reiterating there about the lease levy. And then that recurring cost there of the $4.02610. So the other next step to keep in mind, you know, now that this is out here as well and the present, the information is out there for the community, too. We do have a survey ready to go out to the entire community. We've surveyed our pilot parents, and they've been very supportive of what's been going on. But just to gauge some other support and to see where that is, that's ready to go out on Friday of this week. And also, just to make sure our teachers, I have not run into a teacher yet who has said anything to me about not wanting to implement one-to-one. In fact, I've had to almost slow him down and say, "Remember, this has not been approved yet. This is something that we need to keep in mind." So I know that that is something that they will increasingly be awaiting. But that was our presentation. I know that was long. But what other questions do you guys have?
So I put out something on my Facebook. I got a lot of comments about it and a lot of concerns. And one that was interesting that I just got was about, there was some news program, I guess, on, did anybody see it, on maybe Good Morning America or something, about a study in Australia that showed kids who used electronic devices had test scores two points lower than kids who did not. And I didn't see it, so I don't know if they were comparing apples and apples. But did anybody else see that? Or have you seen any other studies that show kind of the impact on learning?
I know the definition of screen time is different in different studies and in different scenarios. I haven't, I had a team that spoke of it.
Yeah, and I haven't seen it.
I know screen time is defined differently in the educational setting versus...
Well, this was a high, these were high school students who had electronic devices at the school, apparently, who had lower test scores. So anyway, I just thought it might be something to look at, since some parents did see it.
Well, I just, I wanted to speak to that for a second because I'm a four-year-old, so I totally get screen time. And I piloted the second graders, so I understand that concern completely. And as a teacher piloting this program, that was one of my biggest concerns, was screen time in the classroom. What I've noticed, though, is it's all about a balance. I still think that it is important, and the pilot team can speak to that. We have to balance face-to-face communication with paper-pencil communication and the tech communication. And I feel like that's where that support staff is going to be a really crucial piece because they're going to be able to support the teachers in making sure that we are finding that balance. In my second-grade classroom, we don't have the screen on all day, every day. Like, they log in in the morning and then we use it as needed. And I still think that, holding a book in your hand, you're never going to be able to take that love away from a kid. And I think that as long as we're finding that balance between the reading time versus the digital literacy, which is still an important component. But I think that moving forward, we do need to make sure that there's a balance. I think that's super important.
Do you think there's any way to not decrease reading time by having these devices?
Send that in, sorry.
Do you think that reading time will decrease, having devices in a classroom?
I don't. I still, I do, in second grade, I have about 40 minutes of guided reading, which would be independent instruction, and that has not changed with the device. Not to mention, we carry books with us everywhere we go. So I, that was really important to me because I feel like kids need to be reading. They need that practice with digital literacy. But I think that balance is important. And I haven't seen reading decrease, or a child be like, "Reading's not for me." Like, if anything, it's almost made them more excited because they have a wealth of knowledge at their fingertips now.
I think it's going to be interesting that those studies in the next even 10 years, what we're going to see, because right now, when you see at the high school level, those tests that are being pushed out and those kids, like, those kids have been educated for years with paper, pencil, and textbooks. And now we're introducing these, they don't know how to move through it yet, and they don't have the skills necessary to. And we don't know what kind of prep they've also had in the school that they were tested in and that study was done. Because even our kids at the high school, like, they don't know how to annotate yet electronically. That's something that we have to teach them through the years. So what I'm going to be interested in is seeing the kids in the second grade, when they get to the middle school, we don't have to do any of this anymore because they're going to be ready to go. And our educational practices are going to be just beyond where we are today. Speaking of the digital literacy, we have introduced Access 360 in the school district, and we have over access to 25,000 eBooks. And our data this year is really low because it's been a very soft rollout, just kind of testing the waters with it. I think that once the kids get used to e-reading and digital literacy, I think we're going to see that skyrocket because they are able to get literacy anywhere they want, whether it's on their phone, or their new Chromebook, or at home. Those things are going to end itself simply in their life. And I don't think they're going to move away from it. I think there's going to be a passion there because we have, I have all these eBooks, and libraries, and plus I have paper books. And I haven't really seen a difference in any of the data this year with it. And next year will be interesting because we'll roll out just by those things, those initiatives as well. So the data will be there.
I think that's where we, as teachers, step in. And we hope the kids develop that balance of reading an actual book versus the digital literacy. And that's where all of our PPE will come in.
Well, I just think when we were doing the teacher appreciation drop-offs, we got into two classrooms and young kids and, what grades were they?
Let's see, you did, you saw second grade, you saw fourth grade.
Fourth grade, okay. But it was interesting, primarily what we were seeing when they had a little bit of downtime, or you were actually in that time where they were doing the one-to-one, is they were reading. And then the kids that really didn't read well, I think, were listening to it and the words were being highlighted as they were reading. So I think that it's going to increase, you know, with kids that maybe don't traditionally read very well. There's tools to help them increase and enhance their reading. So I thought, I found that fascinating.
It also doesn't change just best practices in teaching. I mean, we've all, you know, we know that students respond and receive information, whether it's on the screen or whether it's us standing up in front of those kids and smelling comments. So, you know, when I think screen time, I think my kids plop down on the couch at home, playing a game and, you know, zoned out and hear nothing I'm saying. But as, you know, best practice in teaching is to teach students and smelling comments, whether it's kindergarten or 12th grade. And I think that that same practice would apply, whether it's me up front or a smartboard or a computer in front of them. I think just best practices in teaching would apply to devices as well.
I want to add one thing, too, from the high school science department. We've talked a lot about this because people have said, "Well, I'm not doing online labs. You know, we want to do labs," and that's not the point of it. We still do hands-on labs, too. And one of the, one of the schools that we toured when we were looking at this initially had some really cool ideas where the kids are still doing hands-on labs and they're creating it. But then they're getting on their devices and they're communicating with somebody from the live, grad student that's giving them tips on what they can do next. And so we're enhancing it, not trying to replace the good things that we are making, are doing.
What about limiting the use of the devices at home? You know, teachers know to really support reading in the classroom. But I also worry about, it's a constant battle with parents. I know I had it. It's easier to supervise a kid when they're glued to an electronic device as opposed to going outside, or how are we going to train parents or inform them that sometimes bringing these home, sometimes they'll be work for the classroom? But I wonder about the kid who's going to say, "Oh, no, this is a classroom thing. I've got to do it." And then they end up spending, you know, three hours at home on their device.
We've all talked about...
Especially elementary.
We've all talked about on the committee that if this does roll out, there would need to be some parent orientation nights initially, right away, before that device even goes home, where it would almost be, you'd have to come in and meet with the parents, go through some different information. And then I think it's our job as a district to help educate them, too, whether it be through articles, whether it be through parent nights. I know that's something under the new strategic plan. We want to be monitoring and increasing our number of parent involvement nights. I could see those focusing at the building level and at the district level. You know, the district level, we could focus on digital literacy and doing some different pieces at the different grade levels and how we're going to provide that safety for families at home as well.
We've talked about that, whether we do this or not.
Exactly.
Is there a way to track how many minutes a kid is on every day and have the teacher know how much they're using it per day?
I think with GoGuardian, technically, when you open up the Chromebook, it is almost always on the internet for the most part. I mean, you can do Google Docs and things offline, but to be on Canvas, you'll have to be online. And GoGuardian would track that. I mean, you'd be able to see a complete usage report from a student.
Is that an easy, is that, will the teacher get a daily report or a weekly report of what their students, how many minutes they're on?
I'm not 100% on the, on the GoGuardian, they'll do that. Because it'll be complicated at the high school level unless it's just their home room or however that works that they would have.
Oh, it would just be, I see, it would be a lot because it'd be on all the time, is what you're saying?
Exactly. So like, how many, how many times they've been on, how many pages they've been on?
On the learning management system, when I get on, I get to see if kids are getting on. It tells me what time they got on, how many minutes they spent.
Oh.
So that can happen within the learning management system. That wouldn't necessarily be tracked just the Chromebook usage, but it would tell me how long they're spending in Canvas.
That's also been a growth for the, I have a student submitted an assignment at like 10:20 in the classroom. Like, at 10:20 one night. And the next day, I was like, "Why are you submitting an assignment at 10:20?" And he's like, and you know, he had a story about it. And I said, "If I keep seeing that happen, I want to make sure that, you know, my dad knows that you're submitting an assignment at 10:20." Like, that's not healthy. You need to be in bed at 8 o'clock. No, I think, I think that actually you could write more opportunity for us to be able to have that open communication, like, "Hey, did you know?" Or, "I don't want, you know, is it taking them that long to do homework?" Because it doesn't need to be. And I think maybe that will provide us more...
But are there other things they could be on? You know, other apps, other like game-type educational games that are not tracked through Canvas?
Anything outside of Canvas would be tracked on GoGuardian. So, I mean, if they were in Canvas submitting an assignment or doing it, you would see that time. But if they run a different browser or a different tab, you wouldn't see that information. I mean, if we pulled a report, we could see it, but not as nicely as it shows in Canvas.
I see. I just want to thank the entire committee. I know you guys have spent hours. Matt graciously took over the committee after I, I think, was named interim superintendent and got overwhelmed. So he got overwhelmed, probably, when I, when he had to help me out. And then Heather joined in just as soon as she got here. So thanks to Heather and Matt and the entire committee. So I appreciate all the time and effort you've spent on this. I know it's been a huge endeavor.
That's a thorough analysis. Very well done.
Thank you. Very nice presentation.
And I did, and I did tell them they could leave when they were finished. So if they get up and go, please...
I do, I want to say thank you. Boy, that was great listening to all your stories.
Yeah.
And I bet, you know, I could probably learn a lot from the students as well with what you're talking about. I don't know all the technology as well, you know, from what, and it's great for the teachers. They stay current with the technology as well. Have you found that the kids are more engaged? I mean, if you can videotape yourself and send it, but that's got to be just cool for kids. I mean, from that perspective.
Yeah, I think they are, they're definitely more engaged. And I think the fact that they know we're seeing what they're doing. I was worried about them just seeing the back of their screen and not knowing if they're, you know, typing on whatever. But when they're, when we're working on something, it's shared with me. And they know that, and so...
That's great. That's a great...
And they can see my name pop up in the corner of their screen. "Oh, this is everyone I, you know."
Now, can kids communicate between themselves on computers? Let's, for example, like an instant messaging type thing, are they doing that?
That's kind of the example that I was giving, like, at night, these kids were coming up. They were trying to do a screenshot of the section who they were doing in. One of the kids couldn't figure it out, and they were inboxing each other through Canvas. And every time the message came, I got a notification. So I like monitoring it, but I didn't get involved in it. I just let them try to manage it themselves, which is cool.
And when we have so much technology, all these Chromebooks coming in, this is a technology question, I don't know. Is there going to be any bandwidth issues with our technology?
Uh, no. The district last year upgraded its bandwidth to a gigabit. So we are locked in for that particular bandwidth for, I think, four more years. And right now, we're utilizing somewhere between 20 and 35, 40%, depending on if we're testing. Or, you know, right now, it's a little bit higher, but we should be fine. We shouldn't have to make any major infrastructure upgrades other than adding more wireless points, which we've already purchased and have been on hand.
I can just say from a personal perspective, I've only been in the elementary pilot classrooms. I haven't been at the middle or the high school level. But if you have any doubts on whether it's the right decision, especially at the elementary level, only because I can only speak to that personally, you go spend about five minutes in the classroom and watch how engaged those students are and how they're helping each other. And, you know, when I, I've talked to the kids and just said, you know, "Would you ever want to go back?" And, "Absolutely not." And when you ask them why, it isn't to do with the games or any of that. It's, it's talking about how they're learning, how they're engaged. And they're, you know, they're becoming the citizens that we want them to be and modeling our strategic plan. So I haven't been in the other ones, but the elementary, definitely. So, I haven't been in the other ones, but the elementary definitely, it, it took me about five minutes and thought, "Oh, this is a no-brainer."
Are we able to observe or would that be too disruptive?
Um, I don't know if anybody-
It's all the time.
I was just going to say.
And I think that will help other parents, like, when you are asking for feedback from parents, I think a lot of that is just, you know, not seeing it, not being in there and understanding of our definition of parents' face time or screen time is a lot different than what it looks like in a classroom. And I didn't even know what it's going to look like until I have the devices and, and just see the background.
If any board members want to go, the next, you all have three days.
Oh, boy.
Because if you want to go the next three days, I'm glad to go with you.
Yeah, no.
I wouldn't recommend Monday.
Is it too crazy at the end of the year here to do it?
And if you wanted to come in and-
Okay, yeah, just let me know if you want to do that, I can figure that out.
And I just wanted to say, thank you, just hearing all of you all talk about it and being so excited yourselves means a lot and says a lot to the process and all. And also, I just wanted to know, do you see this as providing additional help for some students? Like, some students are quiet and if they could just type, you know, you see them struggling or they can send you a message that you know they need help with a specific item, as opposed to them doing the traditional raising their hand and waiting for you to walk over?
Yes, I really feel like that has been a huge benefit to this. I feel like not only can I reach more students, but I can reach more students on an independent level. And yes, like, I'm using a device at times, but sometimes it's, he comes to see me really quick. And no one else knows when they're coming to the back table to see me, they're just coming to see me because they sent me a message that they have loved helping. And no one else has to know that that's between me and the child, and the child is more willing to ask a question than they might not have been as willing to in front of everybody.
Right.
And the problem solving alone is huge. They're becoming independent thinkers, you know, thinking at a secondary level that speaks volumes.
We've had some IEP meetings and, and five or four meeting, you know, for the end of the year, and we had conversations with all the, the device, particularly one of my students, the device and the avenues that it's open for him with some of his learning disabilities, especially his left side with the text-to-speech, or speech-to-text evidence that. And how, like, he's not afraid to, he has all this amazing information up there, but he's hesitant to write or respond to that. And now he can just proofread and edit and we're getting what he truly is capable of doing, you know?
Yeah, those gifted students that also are being pushed. I have a second grader who's currently reading at an 11th grade level. And being a second grader teacher for 10 years, I don't know that I necessarily before the device would have had all of those avenues that I do now. And I'm able to help that child grow and their star report was able to show that they were continuing to grow, even though I wasn't an 11th grade teacher.
Even though they had a device?
Yeah, listen again.
Even though they had a device, they're-
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If the committee doesn't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, please don't feel like you need to. Thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you.
It's past your bedtime, Mrs. Lozier.
Yeah, really.
It's past your bedtime.
My kids are better than that. Thank you for the offer.
Thank you.
Well, geez, my son had her, she was awesome. That was very informative, thank you. And now you want to stay with us and talk about the testing ACT and SAT?
Absolutely. This had been requested to be on here, so I just wanted to give a little update as far as where the, where the State Board of Education is. They have agreed to go with, I don't have anything going up on the screen here, they had agreed to go with SAT, the State Board has, but they have not actually signed the contract. And I just verified that again this morning with, with ISBE. And really, the concern comes up to, you know, we have offered ACT, the PTO and the district paid for it this last year. The state is saying that they're going to pay for the SAT, but again, that contract has not yet been signed and we don't know with the state of the state budget where things sit. I did want you guys to be aware that there is some new legislation. It's House Bill 4362, it was sponsored by Representative Mike Yunus. He has been putting through, it's actually passed the House on April 21st, and that would allow districts to have the choice of ACT or SAT. It is in, it's, it's in the Senate right now under sponsor William Delgado. I did speak with somebody at Representative Yunus's office, that there had been a deadline of May 29th, but they've extended that deadline. She was not sure what the deadline was, but they, it is there and they're looking at seeing if that's an option. I just don't know if we're in the position to make a decision right now as far as which assessment we're going to offer. I don't know that one is necessarily better than the other. I looked at a bunch of Illinois schools, ICC, U of I, ISU, University of Chicago, Northwestern, Loyola, I have a whole list of them here, Bradley, Augustana, they all accept either. And so really, I mean, ultimately, I want to do what's best for our students, but what's best for the students really depends on what field they're going into, because the ACT offers that science portion and the SAT doesn't. So, I don't know that we're ever going to have one assessment that's going to meet the needs of all of our students, but I would, I would say it would be nice to see over the next couple of months what the state is going to say, if they are going to pay for an assessment and then to go from there. But if the board wanted to give me any other direction or anything else you wanted me to look at in regards to this issue, I'd be happy to do that.
And you're not recommending we make a decision at this point?
I am not recommending we make a decision at this time, no.
Thank you.
And Illinois did not pay for the ACT testing for any, any other schools?
They paid for nothing this past year.
Yeah, and so we covered that.
Correct.
And so, can we offer the ACT at the school if it's not paid for by the state or by us? Can you offer it during the school day?
I think that happened, didn't it?
Can we- That's what we did.
Right, is that what you're asking?
I thought we paid for it.
We did, we did, the parents' club and the district's-
If we don't pay for it, I don't know how we, we could offer it on a weekend, and the high school has done that in the past. They offer dates on a Saturday where we have teachers come in and proctor-
You just can't do it on a school day.
I think logistically, that would be a, be a nightmare at the high school level.
Because then you'd have some kids not-
Yeah. You wouldn't have an ideal testing environment, it was, yeah.
You know, I guess the concern that I have is that some people start taking the ACT in eighth grade to practice and they're taking training, you know, they're, they're doing all these courses. And we, we have, I think, most of the trainers around here, the tutors are geared towards ACT, so for, you know, for sometimes kids for two or three years have been prepping for the ACT and then all of a sudden, you know, it would change now. I'm sure these parents would still pay for-
That's okay, if they've been taking it a long, they're not counting on-
I'm sure they would. My only worry, I guess, is that students who couldn't afford to pay for it would then go with something new that they would-
I think that's probably why we're not ready to make a recommendation at this point, because I think there's too many unknowns.
Would we be able to offer both, a choice?
That's what, so that's what the legislation is, is that the state has to-
Well, the state would pay for one or the other. I got some clarification on that. You wouldn't be able to offer both and receive state funding, it would be one for the other. We would have to decide at that point if we were going to do ACT or SAT, and then the state would pick up the tab for one of those if this new bill was approved. In theory, could we offer both? Yes. I do know, though, there's been a lot of, they, the teachers currently do a lot of prep with the students, they do an ACT intensive, and we've been doing that. So then to offer both that ACT intensive and an SAT study program, I mean, we would have to look into the logistics.
How many students today take the SAT, do we know? What percentage?
I do not know that percentage, I can find out though. I know we had a very limited number that took it this year at the high, that took it at the high school. I want to say less than 10.
Yeah, most of the scores used in the Midwest are ACT, right? At the colleges?
Yeah, they accept both, but generally speaking, the Midwest has given ACT.
The only thing I think about deciding early is that it lets people plan, that if, you know, if they-
Until we figure out if they're going to pay or not, because I would assume that's going to weigh into our decision.
Absolutely.
If they've already set for SAT and they're going to pay for it, then-
Well, if they, I mean, are we, I mean, so you think we wouldn't ever decide to pay for the ACT even if the state paid for the SAT, again, like we did this year?
I, I think it's, it's probably an option. I think everything's on the table as an option, but I mean, that is a lot of money to just let sit there to not give the kids, especially if some of them would have taken it and it would have applied to some colleges. I mean, if some, most kids are going to take it more than once. I think it's very rare that kids just take the one that's here at school.
Right, right.
So, then you may, it may even be an advantage that they get an SAT score and an ACT score and they use the highest, because if the schools are taking both-
Right, or, and the schools often have, they'll let you submit both also, they'll let you submit both your ACT and your SAT score.
The ISBE is against the legislation. Ooh, sorry.
I believe so, yes, because they're, they have contracted with SAT. But, I mean, it's yet to be seen what's actually going to happen with that. And that's where I just feel it's very premature to make a, make a decision.
So you follow up, you'll find out what the deadline is, and you'll just keep letting us know as we go on?
Yes, and I'll keep you informed throughout the coming months, throughout the summer, and let you know where things stand. And then we'll probably have to have some serious conversations in August, depending on where, where the state is and what we want to do at that point.
How much does it cost to do the ACT?
Uh, we paid 54 something per student, it was about, the total was 19,000 for all of our juniors. And the PTO paid a large portion of that. And I don't know that we could depend on the PTO to pay for that year after year after year. I know they were willing to this year because it was a, it was a one-time thing, but that would be something to consider moving forward also.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next thing we had on the list was destruction of closed session audio. Anybody have any, any questions regarding the closed session audio? All right. Okay, the next thing we have is ISB Joint Annual Conference, which will be coming up in the fall. I think we have specific dates in the week, November 18th, I think, or 20th, somewhere around there. And we want to kind of have a discussion on that and see if there's any questions regarding the conference and try to see who is interested in attending this year. I know previous years, we tried to take as many board members as possible, then we had got to the point with the budget constraints that we were trying to send in a couple members. Last year, I think there were four of us?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it was about four of us of the seven.
And then we're not, Karen and them.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And they went, and I'll see when Shirley comes back in, but what are, what are your thoughts? I know we're missing a few board members that are out of town and, and one's ill, but we'll, we'll get a ton of information on that, but I guess with people that are here, are you interested in attending?
And that's the reason I need, we need to know is because your hotel reservations will come up before the next board meeting, so I need to know if you're in or out.
Right, so we can get the people, get the answers from the people today. So we got Karen in, Teresa's in, I'm in. Shirley, you in for ISB this fall?
Yes.
Okay, so all four of us are in and we'll-
And I will, I will communicate with the others.
I mean, that's Brian and Paul.
And I- And are you going to have your own place?
Yeah.
Yeah, I won't need accommodation.
All right.
Very good. Um, let's see, online registration. Deborah, Linda, you going to tell us a little bit of information about that process?
The online registration is InfoSAP. We've been looking at online registration for two or three years and trying to crack something that will work with Power School and InfoSAP. It's the one program that we've had before with Power School. What it will do is it'll allow us to put all of our registration online. We can tailor it by grade level, by school, and, and I will sign for class keys to, to each student. It will allow parents to pay by online with a credit card, as well as they could still, you know, come to the school or something. And it will also free-populate some information so that when you're filling out the registration forms for multiple students, you don't have to redo everything over and over and over again. It also will prevent some type, and I don't want to say clerical errors, but if you don't, if a parent hasn't put the information in the system, it will let you go to the next page and make you put the information in, which is wonderful. And it makes you put it in the way that we really need it in the system, so it's a tremendous help. This will save hours and hours of staff time. And I know one of the questions we got was, would it enable us to reduce staff in the buildings? And, no, but what it will do is prevent us, as we continue to grow, from having to add staff. It's just an efficiency. The other benefit of it is, right now, with school registrations, it's all done manually and until, and so, in order for me to know or for us at the district office to know who has and hasn't paid registration fees, we've got to get those manual reports from the secretaries. And depending on what their schedule looks like for the first month of school, we may not have any idea, whereas with this online registration and this program, you can see it, right? I can go in at any point in time and see where we're at as far as registration goes and things like that and be able to run reports. And parents can make partial payments or full payments if, you know, what they have and haven't paid for. We can send it to different, we can put it to the checking accounts that we need to put into so that everything is divided out. It's going to sit just, I can't, and we were worried that the secretaries weren't going to like it, but we showed it to the secretaries, they were like, "Can't start it now."
Yeah, yeah. So, with all these hours that are going to be saved, because I can see the savings, what are some of the things that they're going to be able to do that they haven't been able to do? You know, what, what, what are they going to do with all this extra time?
I think it's hard to say that until we get into this, because you're really not saving time until the spring.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, do we have ideas in mind of what, what they will do?
I can see from a secretary's standpoint, just having just been in a building last year, I mean, when they're entering all that registration information, the hours are grueling. I mean, even just speaking up here in the high school and Carla's got everything spread out all over the desk and the organization, it just consumes everything they're doing for a period of time. That it's hard for them to continue on with the normal day-to-day things-
So they'll just be doing their normal job better?
That needs to be done.
Able to pay attention to what needs to be done on a day-to-day basis throughout your spending, um, and putting the information.
And as our enrollment contin-, I'm sorry, Teresa.
No, go ahead.
And as our enrollment continues to grow, you won't have to ask for additional staff at the secretary, from the secretary staff as quickly as you may without, if things continued the way they were as we automate, sorry.
Is there a fee for parents to pay with a credit card?
There is a fee for the parents to pay. And the other nice thing with InfoSAP is it will go directly to the parents and it will be on, so there would be a convenience fee. I think, I want to say it's three, three or three and a half percent, but it would go to the parent to pay with the credit card. If they don't want to pay the convenience fee, they can still pay with a check or-
But we as a district don't incur any?
We do not incur any of the costs for that at all. And this is the one program that does that, where it all goes back to the parents, so we don't have to-
Can you register online and then send a payment in by check or cash?
Yes. And you can even mark on the forms that you're paying by cash and it will make that note to the, to the check.
And there's no fee for that, there's no fee for that portion?
And there's no fee for that portion. The only way that there's a fee is for cash.
Change, you don't change jobs, you're really going to go next, 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 all the way. The other, also what it does is if you have any health concerns, people put all the dietary restrictions in, go to Power School, which is a cafe, people, if you're a new school and you checked that you had an IP in your former building, you'll actually email, dial a line and say, "Hey, we got a new student that's coming in that has IP." Make sure you do reference form requests. You'll email transportation, get them on the routes, I mean, it's very automated. The upside is that Power School actually bought this company, they're just finishing the acquisition, so it will be the best possible choice because they're owned by the company that does their student management.
And if somebody wants to make a change to something on their registration, can they do that?
I'm fully, you can get back in, at least that's what the, there was staff already emailing, saying they may pay, let's say we have a fee for, after I have to pay for my yearbook, you know, is that maybe center of your book or registration? Can I go back in later and the vendor said the answer was yes? So, it sounds like that, that, that will work.
That's great. Have we talked to other districts who use it?
I'm sorry?
Have we talked to other districts who use this?
They've all been positive, everybody I've talked to, we've been here. We've done it with staff about two years and three months ago. And I have, they have probably, I mean, they've issued a, a doc, like, that's all the districts we're going to have using it, and it's like everyone, everyone in the Chicagoland area, anyway that Power School is pretty much using it. I mean, was it expensive for the district to do? Yes, but they are all very, very happy. It's one of the nicest add-ons you can get from Power School.
Thanks. How long have we been working on this map?
Too long.
For years.[1665.62]
For years. We wanted to do this, so, but we just couldn't find a company we were comfortable with, so.
I think we've dealt with maybe a dozen or nine. And this is the only company that has a true integration with Power School, where the data is very seamless. You know, the rest of them are, like, pushy and pull and all this different stuff that always has a problem, whereas the district will, they'll make sure that they're putting in an area code and a phone number. And that's, that's something that sounds really easy to do, but I know, but then even our own secretaries won't put an area code in, and we've got a Power School messenger. So there's a lot of these data checks that will come into place that will validate that even the address, I think it'll geolocate the addresses, which is a huge problem with our bus routing system that has to be fixed manually. So there's a lot of these data validations that will happen. Because you can't actually change your address, because you might go to another school. So it'll also force parents, like, when we mail, we actually have to mail the staff codes to these addresses. If we get any returns back, we're going to mark those as, maybe we should check the residency on that particular student this year.
Very good.
Less errors. Definitely has to be. And for the secretary sometimes to read the handwriting?
Yeah.
Got to be great.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all your work on that. I'm sure it'll be very successful, and it'll be a help to many parents, especially those with multiple kids who write multiple packets every year. So, thank you. Um, Dr. Parky, will you present some information on the school climate survey?
I am, actually. We talked about this once before, but just to clarify, this is my recommendation for our survey going forward. This is a survey that some of the Luda districts throughout the state of Illinois also use. I checked with them. It came highly recommended. It does match up with all of our scorecard measures, which is what we're trying to find. I checked with the company, and we double-checked that we could fulfill all of our survey needs through this. It covers everything from relationships, teaching and learning, safety, some social media questions, there's questions just for staff, parents, and students. And so it'd be my recommendation next month that we approve the survey and administer it. I'm looking at, hopefully during parent-teacher conference time, to get a high participation rate from our parents, anyway.
And so how does that work where you just get it from one person? How can you make sure they don't fill it out twice or multiple times?
I'll have to check with them, but usually you can only fill it out once per computer.
So it's on, well, even on parent-teacher?
Or through login, you'll get, you'll get a link. And so usually you can only fill out that link one time.
So we won't have paper ones at parent-teacher night?
No.
Okay.
No, but anyone who doesn't have access to a computer will accommodate them if, because there will be some that won't, probably want to do it at parent-teacher conferences.
Can any of the Luda people give you a copy of theirs, or are they not allowed?
I wasn't gonna.
Okay. It's just awful not being able to see the questions, you know?
Well, they're sample questions. Did you see those?
I know, I saw those. I saw those. When we did the Harris poll, did we formulate the questions, or were those formulated for us?
I do not know. I wasn't involved with that, so I don't know. But we can formulate our own, a few at the end. There is an additional charge.
And what was the cost for the Harris? Does anyone?
I would say it was around ten.
Okay, so this is in line with that?
Yep.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
And then, I'm sorry, one more little question. Will you be sending out an email to everybody, ask them then also to fill it out? How, how will you get higher particip, higher participation? I know that's been a challenge.
I think, you mean as far as staff or parents? Parents?
I mean, parents.
Parents. I think if we would do it at either an activity or parent-teacher conference night, something like that, where you have a high percentage in the building, then I think we'll get up.
And then they'll also get some communication directly?
Yep, exactly. I haven't worked out the particulars with the principals yet, but that's my grand plan.
All right, thank you. All right, that will conclude the information discussion item segment of the meeting, and we'll move into the consent agenda. Were there any clarifications or questions regarding the consent agenda? The minutes, a couple policies, textbook adoptions, include, well, the 2016-17 board meeting dates, handbooks.
What page is, I'm sorry, cancel the page. Oh, I guess I just go back to the first page. I'm going to find the list. So there we go. Sorry.
Nothing? Okay, I'll ask for a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented for the Mason 17, 2016 Board of Education meeting.
I second.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Thank you, Teresa. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Lou?
Aye.
Closeman?
Aye.
Disharm?
Aye.
Posthauser?
Aye.
Motion carried. We'll now move into the action item segment of the meeting, and the bill lists and treasuries report are included in the board packet for review. Mrs. Beverly, if you have any questions. Were there any additional questions regarding the finances in the packet this week? No? Okay, Karen, Mrs. Beverly does such a good job. If you have any questions, all details are there. I'll ask for a motion to approve payment of the bills.
I move to approve payment of the bills in the amount of $2,931,902.24 as presented. Second.
Oh, thank you, Teresa. Thank you, Cheryl. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Closeman?
Aye.
Disharm?
Aye.
Posthauser?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
That concludes the action item segment of the meeting, and the board will now move into closed session. Can I please have my motion to adjourn to closed session?
I move to adjourn to closed session.
For the following purposes, as stated in the Open Meetings Act?
Yes. Student disciplinary cases, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, and dismissal of specific employees of the public body, discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed, and, and I guess the fifth.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Karen, and thank you, Cheryl. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Disharm?
Aye.
Posthauser?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Close, aye. Closed session, thank you all. I'll ask for a motion to approve the human resources consent agenda for the 2015-16 school year as presented.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, Karen. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Lou?
Aye.
Closeman?
Aye.
Disharm?
Aye.
Posthauser?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. I'll ask for a motion to approve the human resources consent agenda minus, um, the position of, um...
Catherine.
Hold on one second. Minus the position of Vax High School, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I move to approve the human resource consent agenda for the 2016-17 as presented.
Minus?
Minus the Vax position.
Yes. Second. All right, thank you, Cheryl, and thank you, Karen. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Closeman?
Aye.
Disharm?
Aye.
Posthauser?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve, uh, to deny the extended leave requests for a teacher.
I move to deny the extended leave request for a teacher.
Second.
All right, thank you, Teresa. Thank you, Karen. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Disharm?
Aye.
Posthauser?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Closeman?
Aye. Motion carried. And I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the closed session minutes.
I move to approve the closed session minutes of the regular board meeting of April 20th, 2016.
I second.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Thank you, Teresa. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Posthauser?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Closeman?
Aye.